It is 9:31 and I'm Sarah Nelson, Chair of the Committee, and Tamen Um is our clerk today. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Salwant?
Present.
Councilmember Herbold? Council President Juarez?
Here.
Chair Nelson?
Present.
Three present.
Thank you, Tamen. For the record, Councilmember Dan Strauss is excused from today's meeting. So I am excited to have our first meeting in person in chambers today. While I recognize that we're still dealing with the pandemic, frontline workers have been on the job in person, keeping the city government and the city as a whole running. And we're public servants, and I believe that the public is best served with in-person meetings because they facilitate a more free-flowing conversation and the public can see our interactions. I'll be looking for visual cues from my council members and presenters at the table, so if I don't see you on the screen, please just speak up. Let's see, public meetings are also important in person because it gives reporters more immediate access, and I'm sure they'll be flocking to my meetings in the future. All right, so we have a hybrid model to accommodate vulnerable people and to accommodate people who are traveling, so I ask for your grace as we drive this technology for the first time. There are three items on today's agenda. The first is a presentation on the Office of Economic Development's priorities for an equitable recovery and inclusive economy under their new interim director, Marka McIntyre. The second is our first discussion of Seattle City Light's 2023 to 2028 strategic plan and rate path. And the third is a discussion and possible vote on an ordinance authorizing City Light to execute an agreement with the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission, hereforth referred to as SEEK, to, let's see, to convey funds received from the State of Washington Department of Commerce and City Light funds to protect the Skagit watershed. Now first, I have a public service announcement from our utilities. As City Light and Seattle Public Utilities work to inform customers about resources available to help with utility bills, there has been an increase in scam reports of people posing as representatives of the city. Seattle City Light and Seattle Public Utilities will not call customers to demand immediate payment or personal information, and if someone calls demanding payment rather than working with you to establish a payment plan, that is a scam. Customers who believe they've been contacted by a scammer should call 206-684-3000 to verify their account. All right, moving on to the agenda, if there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. We'll now move on to public comment on the items listed on the agenda. Let's see.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold has joined the committee.
Welcome, Councilmember Herbold. Okay, we're ready for the new video.
Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting ID is different from the general listen line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue, that is your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You would then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when 10 seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
All right, we will start with remote commenters. Please state your name and the item to which you are speaking. And if you haven't registered to speak, you can still sign up using the link on the agenda before the public comment period has concluded. And for in-person comment, please sign up on the sign-up sheet located near the podium in the Seattle chambers right here. All right, let's see. Our first speaker, I believe, is Tom Uniac, and people will have two minutes to speak.
Great, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, hello, my name is Tom Uniac, and I'm the Executive Director of Washington Wild, a statewide nonprofit that has been dedicated to protecting Washington's wildlands and waters since 1979. I'm excited to testify today in support of funding as part of an historic agreement made by British Columbia, the British Columbia Government, the State of Washington, the city of Seattle, the Nature Conservancy of Canada, Imperial Metals, and the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission to relinquish mineral tenures in the headwaters of the iconic Skagit River. Washington Wild spends nearly all of its efforts working on issues in Washington State, but logging and mining threats in the headwaters of the Skagit River would impact downstream values like salmon and orca recovery, clean and safe drinking water, tribal treaty rights, and life ways, and the health of Puget Sound. That's why we organized an international coalition four years ago opposing mining and logging in the Skagit headwaters, which started with less than a dozen organizations and grew to nearly 300 tribes, First Nations, outdoor industry leaders, local businesses, hunting and fishing groups, elected officials, and conservation organizations on both sides of the border. And that list included a majority of the Seattle City Council members. Thank you for your support, as well as the chairwoman. The Skagit River starts in British Columbia but quickly flows south into Washington State through North Cascades National Parks, Skagit Wild and Scenic River, the Mount Baker Smoqualmie National Forest, and through the renowned Skagit Valley. The Skagit River provides one-third of the freshwater inputs to the Puget Sound and supports the largest populations of threatened steelhead and Chinook salmon in the region. With partners including the Upper Skagit and Swinamish Tribes, Seattle City Light, National Parks Conservation Association, Conservation Northwest, and Skagit Audubon, we cheered the announcement in 2019 that clear-cut logging would be halted in the headwaters. We cheered even louder when the news of the agreement came ending the existing mining claims. The coalition continues to work to ensure that perimeter protections are established in the Skagit headwaters to prohibit new mining claims and logging threats and to clean up leftover mining waste and debris. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on this important issue.
Thank you very much. I see no one else signed up on our remote list, and it doesn't appear that there is anybody to speak in person. All right, so that concludes our public comment period. Will the clerk please read item one into the record and the presenter to come to the table?
Agenda item one, Presentation on Office of Economic Development's Departmental Structure and Overview for Briefing and Discussion.
Okay, I'm not going to lie, I've been looking forward to this presentation for a long time while interim Director McIntyre has been doing a deep dive on OED's existing work plan and its staffing capacity and new emphases and priorities. So, Director McIntyre, please take it away.
Thanks, Councilmember Nelson. Is my mic working? It sounds like it is. Great.
Are you?
It is fun to be back here in council chambers. Thanks for having us. Welcome to the council members at the dais, and then welcome to the council members online in a hybrid format. My name is Marka McIntyre. I'm the interim director for the Office of Economic Development.
Can you please pause for a moment?
Sure.
I'm not seeing the presentation on my Zoom window. Can the public see it?
It's on the screen.
Okay. There we go. Thank you. Sorry, please continue.
Next slide, Tamen. So today, I'm really excited to be back, to be here in front of you. Last time I was here, we were talking about our race and social justice initiative goals and what we did in the last year and kind of what we're looking forward to next year, or this year, rather. And now, today, I'm here to give you kind of a peek behind the curtain in how we're thinking about OED's role and function in the regional economic development system and the local economic development system, and then talk a little bit about how we're thinking about how we can revitalize our local and regional economies as we turn the corner on the pandemic. I want to be clear that this really is an update on where we're going. My intent here is not to say that we've got a fully baked plan. It's more to reset a conversation with council about economic and workforce development and share with you kind of what we're thinking about, some key strategic questions. So some of those questions are, who are we serving? How are we serving them and why? What's the right balance between OED being reactive and proactive to growth opportunities? What's the best role for the city in shaping growth, especially in kind of a regional context? And where can we, as a city department, make the most impact for residents and businesses? So those are some of the questions that we're wrestling with as we're thinking about OED going into the future. Next slide, please. So previously, OED has largely been a collection of programs rather than a strong department with a clear economic agenda. And so that's item number one for us as a team over at OED to figure out is kind of what's our coherent mission and vision, and then what's our role? So our mission, as we're talking about it, is to build an inclusive economy where everyone in Seattle can fully participate in and benefit from our prosperity. And then our role is to drive economic growth through strategies and investments that open doors and remove barriers to wealth-building opportunities, especially for communities that have been systemically excluded from such opportunities. So really, to kind of shorthand that, it means that we want to be a dot connector. Rather than a program manager or deliverer of discreet services, we want to have a larger worldview about economic development and be more of an economic orchestrator. So I'll give an example of that. Economic development and workforce development are team sports. They don't happen in silos. And one of the missing elements lately has been Seattle being a regional partner, so showing up at the regional stage and really trying to push Seattle's economic agenda, but seeing how it fits in with other cities, with the county, with the state, with the federal government, really understanding how we link all those together, both to have alignment in our strategies, but also to create multiplier effects for monies that we spend in investments. And so just as an example of what OED needs to do differently is instead of being a program manager, we need to be a regional player, showing up at PSRC, at the Workforce Development Council, and other bodies to really be a partner, but also a leader on that regional level. Next slide, please. So one of the key problems that we're focused on at OED, but also where we see huge opportunity, is the issue of how different people benefit, how people benefit from the economy very differently, largely based on their race or ethnicity. This is one of my favorite quotes. This is by Dr. Raphael Bostic, who's the Chair of the Federal Reserve Bank of Atlanta. And this happened right after the murder of George Floyd in 2020. He wrote an excellent opinion piece about the intersection of race and economic issues. And he said, "Systemic racism is a yoke that drags on the American economy. This country has both a moral and economic imperative to end these unjust and destructive practices." So as we're at OED, we feel those imperatives very deeply, and that's really driving a lot of our work as we think about what we're going to do next. And so then, as we think about, what does that mean and how do we actually make that happen? The key thing we want to focus on is the racial wealth gap, which is quite large. And there's been a lot of focus on the racial income gap, which is important, and we need to focus on job creation, inclusive business practices, and talent development. Those are all very important. But at OED, one of the things that's been missing is this focus on wealth building and business ownership, business growth, and asset ownership, which are going to be really key to where we go in the future. Next slide, please. So what does that mean? Like, how do we actually tackle the racial wealth gap? We're talking about an inclusive economy, which can sound kind of fluffy and seem like a just a jargony piece, but how we're defining it is the meeting of all these three types of wealth. So you've got individual wealth, often through income generation. You've got business wealth through business growth, and you've got community wealth, often through place-making strategies that allow for a healthy business environment, both at the local neighborhood level, but also at the city and the regional level. Next slide, please. So for OED's work, to be able to influence those, these are the three areas where we're really going to prioritize. Workforce development, so this is how do we create talent? How do we help match people to jobs? But at the end of the day, it's really how are we getting people onto career pathways so that they can earn higher incomes and better benefits over time? It's not enough to just get people on the first rung of the ladder. We really need to think about how are we getting people two, three, four rungs up the ladder over the course of their careers? How are we helping people move from careers as economic conditions change and job expectations change? And then how are we making sure that they're well-prepared to be successful in those careers? Business and industry growth, I think this is something where we've struggled as a city, both in our industry relations, so resetting some of our relationships with different industries, whether that be maritime or technology, healthcare, construction. We've got some really healthy industries here in the Puget Sound and Seattle region, but we haven't necessarily focused on business growth. There's been a lot of focus on relief efforts, and rightfully so, especially through the pandemic, and helping businesses that are struggling. But we've also got to prioritize how are we helping businesses grow with a special emphasis on helping BIPOC and women business owners grow their businesses, gain wealth, and hopefully own their businesses and their assets as they're going along. And the third, healthy economic ecosystems, this is actually where we've had some success over the pandemic, is really trying to activate our neighborhoods, make investments that are going to empower neighborhoods to be self-determinative about their economic future. I'll give one example. Last Friday, I was with three other city department directors. We went and visited Lake City Collective in District Five, which started out largely as a nonprofit that was supporting their neighborhoods and has now expanded with the support of OED and OIRA to support language access help for businesses all across the city. So when those businesses are trying to access federal relief funds or trying to tap into an OED program or get connected with business training at the Seattle Public Libraries, they can go to Lake City Collective and get those resources and those connections in language. And so something that started as just a neighborhood business ecosystem group has now grown into a real citywide asset that we'd like to see replicated in more neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So with this kind of new role as an orchestrator and with these new demands and challenges, both coming out of the pandemic, but also with the new priorities on wealth creation, we need a new OED. So a lot of that is happening right now. This is my third and a bit month in the role, and we've been ferociously going at kind of a reorganization so that we can be more effective at the work, so that we can deliver excellent project management, we can deliver excellent customer service, and we have enough brain power and talent dedicated to help with those growth strategies. Because one of the biggest things that we need to do at OED is get out of reactive mode and get more into proactive mode. So we've been restructuring the department. We've been adding capacity and talent. I mentioned this last time at the RSCI presentation, but I'll mention it again, that we've had 78% turnover of staff in the last 16 months. And so that's just, it's both an issue in that we've lost a lot of institutional knowledge, but it's also an opportunity to really add some new capacity and talent to the team. Throughout it all, we're going to need to strengthen and grow, as I mentioned, our regional relationships, but also our private sector partnerships. And then, as I mentioned at the top, there's tremendous opportunity in seeking alignment and multipliers within our regional economic development system. So you see here on the right side of the screen, two, kind of two sides of the house. Navigation strategies, so that's when a business comes to us seeking some form of help, whether it's connection to relief dollars or help with an accounting issue or any myriad of things that they might need help from OED or the city on. We need a way to make sure that we're either answering their question quickly and succinctly or we're navigating them to the appropriate resource, either within the city or with our network of, referral network of partners. We've got to do a better job of using technology to both monitor and track what we're doing there so that we can be really clear on what trends of questions we're getting so that we can feed those up to you guys at council, but also to the mayor's office and other departments to try and solve problems before they become problems in the future. But then second, as I mentioned, we're going to have to have this portion of the staff dedicated to growth strategies, and we're splitting that into three main buckets. We're doing capacity and neighborhood business development, wealth-building strategies, which includes real estate, finance, and market expansion, and then our key industries and workforce development group. So more to come on kind of how this is actually shaping out, but wanted to give you guys a preview of where we're going as a department. Next slide, please. So some of this is a little repetitive, but I did want to include, one, this lovely picture of people out spending their time in their day of service, helping build a better Seattle. But then also just talk a little bit about how we're doing this. So it's the collaborative relationships, it's aligning regionally, it's prioritizing multiplier opportunities, and then really prioritizing innovative approaches to wealth building. This is, again, it's something that's a little bit new for OED, for the city to be focusing on. So we're going to have to be smart and creative. We want to go out and steal other ideas from other cities, but also look to our communities who are already doing this work and lift up those ideas that we think could really make a difference and we could scale quickly. Next slide, please. One of the key opportunities that we're focused on as we go through our restructuring with this new role is this Economic Revitalization Implementation Plan that council has tasked OED with developing. So this is just kind of an outline of how we're doing it. We will have more to come, hopefully next month and then in the following months. But first, the goal is to define the future of the Seattle economy and do this in partnership with a variety of other economic and workforce development players. We really want to find those shared objectives and figure out where we agree rather than focusing on where we disagree. So if we can find those four or five things where there's common agreement that we really need to focus on, and I'll give an example, access to capital for small businesses is clearly going to be a priority. It was a problem before the pandemic and then hugely exacerbated during the pandemic. We did find some innovative solutions, and we've got to continue kind of building on those as we go forward. But if we can find those four or five things where we agree and really bring people together around them, that's a one Seattle approach to building a new, more equitable economy. Second, as part of that study, we've carved out this piece for a citywide workforce development strategic plan. We could have, and we probably will, an entire another presentation on workforce development, but it's a key moment where our city has had a fragmented approach to workforce development. We have not been a good partner at the regional level. We can reset all of that and I think really drive some new innovative ways of getting people connected to jobs and on really successful career pathways. So if you combine the two of those, we'll then have clear recommendations for the payroll expense tax dollars investments, as well as, again, kind of the overall look and feel of the Office of Economic Development. Throughout it all, with our outreach and engagement, the planning process will generate a coalition of supporters for these ideas so that, again, we're not kind of baking a plan and hoping that, and delivering you kind of a doorstop novel of ideas. We're actually generating this in partnership. So at the end, we're already going to be moving toward implementation rather than having to have a plan just kind of sit on a shelf while everyone reads it and kind of calculates it and figures out whether or not it fits their plans and goals. We'll already have done that by involving people in the planning process. So Phase One, which is a meta-analysis of local and regional economic and workforce development strategic plans, we'll have at the end of this month. And so we'll be sharing that with you guys in July as we kind of go on a little bit of a roadshow to go back to the partners to tell them what we found. Next slide. So I do want to be clear, as I talk about the future, I don't want to neglect the present, which is that a lot of businesses and workers still need emergency relief. We are not out of the pandemic. And so we really want to set up this next year as a bridge to the future. So it's a bridge year where we're both still providing some immediate and emergency relief, but also starting to build out some of those programs that are going to set us up for long-term prosperity. So here are just some of the buckets that we're really focused on in this bridge year. Again, continuing with downtown and neighborhood business district recovery, it's imperative that we activate those neighborhoods, activate downtown, get people out spending money in Main Street businesses and really just generating that vibrancy. We need to focus on small business growth. Again, there's an emergency relief aspect to that, as well as trying to set up businesses for future success and expansion. I've mentioned workforce development and the citywide investment strategy that we've got going on there. Key industry support, there are some industries that are pretty healthy coming out of the pandemic. There are others that really, really could use some support from the city. So we've got to be there for them. I'd call it the maritime industry is one where there's a lot of changes happening with industrial maritime lands, there's a lot of changes happening with their workforce and talent. We've got to really be a partner and thoughtful about how we're supporting that industry. It's such a key component of our economic makeup, but also as part of our history as a city. And then finally, as I mentioned with the Lake City Collective, we've got to do a better job with our language access and outreach. It is all well and good if we develop the coolest program in the history of economics here at the city. If we can't get that out to folks and let them know about it and encourage everybody to apply and benefit from it, it's worth nothing. And so we've got to step up our game and establish better trust externally with our partners and make sure that we're doing it in an equitable way that's really inviting people in and making them feel like they belong and that they're part of OED, and we want them to succeed. Next slide. So the good news is that one of the silver linings of the pandemic is the Clifford dollars that we were able to put to work for economic relief and recovery. And so we've learned a lot in the last year as we've deployed those dollars about where we can really make a difference. And I'll give one example, the Seattle Restored Program, which we launched earlier this year that connects BIPOC businesses to available vacant spaces downtown in downtown Seattle, is a great example of us providing access and breaking down barriers to real estate opportunities for businesses. Another good example is the Tenant Improvement Program that we piloted in the central area. One of the businesses that we helped is the now world-famous Communion in the Liberty Bake Building. The Tenant Improvement Program helps with the build-out of the space so that we can make sure that when a business gets in there, they can be as successful as possible. So we want to expand that. And then finally, we want to roll out, and we're working on this for later this year, a small business ownership program. Because again, it's not just about the business growth, it's also about business ownership and asset ownership. So as we think about these things, this is some stuff that we've learned over the last year, some with these one-time recovery dollars that's really setting us up for success in the future. And if we can grow and scale those, we believe we're going to be really successful, again, in those goals of trying to grow businesses and get people into higher-paying jobs. Through it all, I'll just mention that last bullet of business technical assistance. We know that businesses need help with the paper game. It's not always easy figuring out how to apply for a loan or how to apply for some of these grant programs. So we've got to make sure that we're holding their hands, as well as we're capacity-building in neighborhoods and across the city with CBOs and other organizations to help hold their hands as well. It really is, as I mentioned earlier, a team game, a team sport economic development, and we've got to build a better, more sophisticated team to really help those businesses and those workers. Next slide. So wrapping up, we've got new demands, new strata- So wrapping up, we've got new demands, new strategies and a new look OED. The city's got to prioritize wealth building and income boosting efforts. And so our economic development priorities are on the talent development, quality job creation, inclusive business practices for income boosting efforts. And then business ownership, business growth and asset ownership for for the wealth building efforts. Here listed here are just again, some of the new pieces that we're really going to focus on in the near term as we're doing our reorganization and adding talent capacity. We want to focus on real estates. We want to focus on finance, particularly access to capital, and then we want to focus on market expansion. We think that these three areas are going to be kind of hallmarks for OED going forward. They're going to take us a little time to build out, but we're really excited about what they could bring to the mix. We're going to continue to do, as I mentioned, the technical assistance, the key industry industry support and a variety of other services. But some of these new pieces, we think are going to be the the real key between where we were. Pre-pandemic and there we where we want to go to a more equitable economy post pandemic. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Well, thank you, Mark, and you had me at the new OED. So it's clear from your presentation how vitally important OED's work and mission are and its solidifying identity. It has been hobbled hobbled by staffing shortages for years and and the seventy eight percent staff turnover was really striking. And I also think it's it. You know, it has been. I don't know, it the importance of its work has been downplayed or or we have failed to recognize, I'll just say. Its importance as the place where equity in terms of job creation and BIPOC wealth generation and anti-displacement lives. In city government. So this will be top of mind as we go into the budget discussions. And that's that's all I have. I'll open it first for questions from my colleagues. Well, I'll get I'll get things started here. So I really like you distinguishing between navigation services, which I think of as direct services to businesses. And growth strategies, which I'm kind of thinking as policy areas, priorities, programs. And so when it comes to the navigation services, you spoke to it a little bit. I'm wondering if you could expand on that and. Because you and I have spoke of a help desk and the back team, so just wanted to hear a little bit more about that.
Sure. Right now, our front door to to OED is is a little, it's either hard to reach or hard to get in. And so we need to have a better front door, both technologically, but then also our system for intake. So when a business calls, making sure that they get connected as quickly as possible to the resource that they need. Right now, it's a little bit ad hoc where if you if you reach the right person on the team. Lucky for you, if you don't, it gets a little it gets a little hairy. And so we've got to systematize how we're doing the intake of those issues and calls. Some of that, as you mentioned, is the technology. So what does our website look like? What kind of help desk online can we offer to quickly answer questions that people might have? Some of that is our own staff, so how we're assigning those tickets out and making sure that they're getting followed up on. And then again, we're tracking and finding trends so that we can help influence policymaking and program development. Some of that is working with other departments, ideally through the recetated city business action team, so that we can batch some of those problems together. Have a team of decision makers in different departments, so we can take those problems, get them quickly resolved. And then and then get the businesses moving on to whatever's next in their in their business cycle. So there's a variety of elements that we're trying to tie together. It is building up kind of a new system, so it's a little a little rockier than I had anticipated. But I think there's there's a lot of energy on the team for finding a solution, working with businesses to figure out how to solve their problems in a in a quick and efficient manner.
Great. Yeah, as a small business owner, I've often thought that there should be a one-stop shop where you can get all your information about licenses and permits and yada yada. And then if. If SBCI is telling somebody to do one thing, but City Light is saying, no, you have to do this other thing first, you know, that kind of coordinated response. That, you know, departments can talk to each other, but I really appreciate the emphasis on that. And I'm sure other small businesses do too.
Well, and part of it is at OED, we've got to play a little bit of a translator role between businesses and governments. Because they do move at different speeds and they do talk about things differently. And so we've got to figure out. How we do a better job of translating so that we're on the same page and working on the same time timeframes, because oftentimes I think that's where we get. Off kilter is a business needs something in a week and the cities maybe that's not how the process is set up to answer that type of question. So we've got to do a better job of syncing those up.
Got it. Councilmember Swan.
Thank you, Chair Nelson. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just wondering what what is the. What are the conversations the Office of Economic Development and the mayor's office have been having? I hope you've been having some conversations about the. Recession that is looming in front of us. And in reality, some many economists are actually. Wondering if the recession is already underway, if you look at. The runaway inflation of the historic forty-year-high inflation, people are really feeling the pinch. At the gas pump and in the grocery store. And just given the way the economy under capitalism is set up, we know that three-quarters of what holds up the economy. In terms of GDP is consumer spending and given this dire situation. I hope you all have been discussing what impact this will have on the economy as a whole, but especially for ordinary people, working people, small struggling, small businesses. The prognosis does seem to be extremely concerning. And I'm asking this question in general, but also in the context of the fact that. An interesting ruling came from the Washington State Court of Appeals yesterday. The this ruling upheld the Amazon tax that was won by ordinary people's movements in twenty twenty. And I mentioned that because for several reasons, one is obviously that. That without that tax, actually in the COVID recession, the Seattle City of Seattle economy would have cratered if it wasn't for the revenues generated by that tax. But that that tax was something that the Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce and big businesses and the wealthy really. You know, were extremely hostile to Mr. McIntyre, Mark McIntyre, you were, I believe, the executive vice president of the. Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce at that time. So anyway, my point is that the positions that. The big businesses have taken historically have been extremely contrary to what is being claimed, which is the health of small businesses, health of the economy and so on. It was proven beyond a shadow of a doubt how critical the Amazon tax has been for the economy. In fact, we need much more actually progressive revenues. We need to increase the Amazon tax. But I'm also asking that, as I said, in the context of. The dire predictions for the economy. So if you can just weigh in on that, thank you.
Sure. Thanks for bringing up the possible looming recession. It is concerning. And in conversations, I think there's there's a couple of things that we can do to prepare ourselves. One is we need to get smarter at OED about what's going on with micro and macroeconomics. We've just hired a data and research person who's going to be starting at the end of this month. So that's going to help us get ahead of these and better understand what's going on locally. So we can tailor our strategies and our investments. Hopefully prevent the worst, but also set ourselves up for success coming out of coming out of issues like a recession or the pandemic. Second, and this I think was a huge silver lining of the pandemic, again, was the regional alliance and partnership. We are going to be stronger if we're working with our suburban partners, if we're working with our regional entities. And we have alignment and support each other. That's that's going to be key to weathering any storm, whether it's the pandemic, looming recession or anything else, is working together as a region. So it is concerning. We are talking about it and trying to prepare as best we can. But I guess the flip side of that is is in any downturn, there's always opportunity and we need to be geared up to be looking for those opportunities and setting ourselves up for future success. For the residents and businesses.
What what opportunity would you be talking about? Right now, the living standards for the majority of people are in extremely are under extreme stress. And small businesses. Were among those who took the brunt of the pandemic and recession. So I'm really not understanding what you mean by opportunity. And also, what is the vision here when the basis of a lot of what.
Councilmember Swan, Councilmember Herbl does have a question, so.
Okay, but I'm I'm a member of this committee and I'm asking a question. I I'm not understanding what. What is the vision that the forces that you've been in conversations with are bringing? I mean, as I mentioned. The Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce sued the city to overturn the Amazon tax. The Court of Appeals has just upheld the tax. But what is the vision you bring if you if you if if the if if you if you're opposed to even common sense. Measures that the city actually needs. So when you say opportunities in a recession, that sounds like an oxymoron to me, like opportunities for whom. The vast majority of ordinary people and small businesses are going to take the brunt of this recession. What is the opportunity for them? What is the opportunity you see when the gas pump says six dollars for a gallon?
I'm not saying that it'll be easy, but I think first of all, we've got to stabilize and provide relief to those who are suffering. And I think we've we've seen how we've done that through the pandemic. It hasn't been successful across the board, but I think we did brunt some of the edge of it. And then I think also during the pandemic, you saw a. Historic rise in the number of small businesses that were created. People. People left their jobs and started creating businesses and we've got to figure out a way to help support them so that they can be successful in the long term. It's not easy running a small business. It's incredibly hard and we at the city unfortunately sometimes make it harder. And so again, that's why I really want OED's role to be about breaking down barriers and opening doors, so that those who have been excluded from economic prosperity in times past. Regardless of kind of current conditions, that we're trying to do our best to give them access to opportunity now and into the future. Again, I'm not I'm not trying to sugarcoat it and say that it's going to be easy or that that there won't be suffering along the way, but we've got to do our best to alleviate that and try and set people up for success.
Councilmember Herbl.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions that I've had the opportunity. To address in our meetings together. But just the. Look, enjoyment of of your answers, I want to talk a little bit about the key industries for the city. On slide ten, you mentioned that key industry support is a bridge to the future. And as I've mentioned to you in our meetings, I'd really like to see creative industries restored. To the short list of key industries that drive our city's future. The city's twenty nineteen creative economy study found that the creative sector. Drives a full eighteen percent of our GDP here in Seattle. That's four times the national average and we know. That a subset of workers in the sector, our arts, culture, film and music workers. Have been among the hardest hit and the slowest to recover from the pandemic. So focusing efforts on this sector. Has the potential not only to help us rebound faster here in Seattle, but to preserve what. We all agree is so special and unique about our city. So just wanting to know a little bit. About how you're thinking about the creative economy as you consider leading the department's work. And the strategies that we can look forward to working together to employ to lift up. This really important contributor to our city's economy. And I'd love to love to hear your thoughts on that. Also have one one additional follow-up question, if that's okay. Well, it's not really a follow-up question, maybe it's a separate question.
Before we begin, can I mention something? You know, I I was going to say the end of my questions that I didn't ask anything about film or the creative economy cluster. Because we're going to be having a another discussion just about that on July twenty seventh, proceed.
This is, yeah, and this is much broad. This is not just film and music. This is the creative, right, creative industries more broadly. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. And you're right. I mean, a lot of those industries were the first to shut down and the last to open. Coming out of the pandemic, and so they're still very much feeling the brunt of of that economic leg. As I mentioned, if our if our goals at OED are how do we. Boost people's income and get them into jobs with higher pay and better benefits. And then secondly, how do we grow businesses to grow wealth, particularly for communities that have been excluded? I think the creative industries fit. Nicely into that rubric. So if we're talking about creative economy jobs. Those exist in a variety of different industries beyond just kind of film, music, nightlife, special events. And so we've got to figure out, and as you said in the study, it's it's shown that that's where there's going to be a lot of job growth. Now and into the future, particularly because those are automation-proof, tend to be automation-proof jobs. As well as, you know, we have an incredible innovative spirit here and creative spirit in Seattle. And so part of it's just harnessing that and figuring out how do we put that to work in a in a creative. Creative way. And then second is how are we supporting those specific industries to make sure that those businesses are as successful as possible? I would call out film as an example, just because that's been one that we've been focused on at the Office of Economic Development in my first three months here. Working with stakeholders, working with production. Businesses to figure out what do they need, both in the short term and the long term, and trying to come up with a plan. For how we how we best serve them. And as Councilmember Nelson said, that's what we're going to be coming to. This committee at the end of July to talk about. As an example of how we're supporting one of the creative industries. So it is important. We are, that's part of the talent and capacity that we're building on the team, so that we have better brain power and more people to do the outreach and understand what the needs are, as well as to hopefully design programs and policies. To again, get locals into those high-paying creative jobs, as well as support those businesses in creative industries to be successful coming out of the pandemic.
Thank you. May I ask my second question or would you? Okay, okay. Thanks so much. Just following up on our discussion. Around how OED can work with the Office of Housing. And facilitate their interest in taking a sort of a indie development approach to housing development, sort of housing and. Different types of spaces that can activate. A community, whether or not it's a retail space, some other kind of commercial, nonprofit use, cultural space. In my group, my district, I've been working with a group of community members who have for several years been working towards creating a surplus piece of property. And they've long held a division a vision of developing affordable housing. And with ground floor commercial space to help activate that street space, build community. Safety, provide opportunity for small entrepreneurs and contribute to a more walkable community in a place. That isn't terribly walkable right now. Office of Housing has funds that can award to potentially support affordable housing on that site. The trick is, as I I know you understand, Director McIntyre, is that. How to braid those funds with other kinds of support that will allow for that ground floor retail to be built and affordable as well. And I know that you've been having conversations. With Director Winkler Ken and just wanting to hear. Since I I know you had had a had a meeting with her to talk about this topic, to see if there's anything anything new to bear.
Thanks for bringing it up. I think this is so exciting because we know we need more housing and we know we need more commercial, affordable, commercial space. And and so putting those together in the same projects just makes a ton of sense. There's also a workforce angle there as well, as we're building these houses, housing units. And managing them, how are we making sure that we're training locals and getting them hired into those those good paying construction jobs? So in my in my talks with some of the other directors, I'd include OPCD as as another department that we're working with to explore this. There, there's a lot of interest. It does get a little technical into how you braid those funds together. I like that phrase, I might steal it from you. But I'm excited because some of the programs that I mentioned, like the Tenant Improvement Fund and the Small Business Ownership Fund are really set up to help. And as well as Seattle Restore, help make sure that we're doing that matchmaking, that we're making those spaces work for different types of small businesses and that ideally, we're putting people on the path to ownership of their of their real estate. So some of the stuff that we're launching now can fit into some of the future combined strategic work that we can do with the Office of Housing and Office of Planning and Community Development. An opportunity, there's a couple of opportunities that we see going into the future. One is the twenty twenty-three housing levy, because that's going to be a renewal of a lot of resources. And so making sure that we're calling out. Affordable commercial space is an ambition for for that work is important. And then second is looking. And then second is looking at the, the, uh, next round of the comprehensive plan. As, so as we kind of unzip the code, thinking about, are there any changes that we need to make to make this a little bit more easy uh, to do and part of, uh, our long, long-range planning for our strategy and investment around housing and economic development together. So more, more to come on that. We're actually working on a SLY, uh, for council in this regard that'll be delivered later this year to kind of give you uh, a more grounded sense of where we're going with this. But know that this is one of the areas of opportunity that we see. And certainly, again, with a new look OED that wants to be a real strong partner, one of those partnerships is going to be with the Office of Housing and OPCD. So looking forward to it.
Yeah, Councilmember Juarez has a question, but I wanted to also, hold on a second.
Okay.
Um, I would, I just wanted to note that, uh, regarding the creative, um, cluster, uh, there is a position that, um, is currently provided. We're going to be waiting from, uh, from you for more information about that to lift that. But as soon as we get that position filled, then, um, we can add horsepower to, to those efforts. Okay, Council President Juarez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first of all, um, Markum, thank you for, um, being here and your presentation. And moving from the, um, nonprofit, private sector, if you will, to now becoming a public servant. Um, I actually like you having on this side of the aisle more because I feel like now we're part of the solution and we can have discussions about the jumpstart Amazon tax and what that means and how we use those funds. But, um, getting back to your presentation, um, the, um, column that I was most interested in, and obviously we know the work that OED does, is the finance and the access to capital. I, I obviously support small businesses and, and assisting them. My focus has been, in my personal and professional life, is building economies, not only in Indian country, but in rural communities and local communities, establishing economic engines, teaching people how to go to a bank, write a business plan, get a loan, um, and access to capital. And so I'm wondering why, I have two questions actually. Are you, is OED going to take an active role in working with the Small Business Association? Because we do a lot of work with them. Um, and I know that there's some, some whispering now about some taxing coming up on a particular industry. And, you know, a lot of those issues, um, if we talk about what training is, it really is about, um, and I used to do this for clients and tribes and individuals, um, working your way with a small business association in taking the class and teaching how to write a business plan, what is your business, mock interviews, low-interest loan capital. Um, and then the small business, the SBA, at least under the Native American and other, other groups as well, would end up forgiving the loan when you became not so much successful, but when you could meet those payments. And so I don't think you need to reinvent the wheel on that. I don't think OED and government is good at that on some level and a local level. So are you, are you working with, um, with, um, because you're talking about lenders and, and, you know, because you're going to need angel investors, you're going to know how to go to a bank. And I don't know if it's so much handholding, because I think people have the intuitive knowledge and the drive to do it. Um, but it's more like, what are, what are some of the existing programs that are already here that have been successful? That is OAD, OED going to take advantage of and use?
Uh, this goes back to my love of alignment that I, I completely agree. We don't lack for resources here. A lot of it is more about how we're navigating people to the right resources and kind of opening, opening those doors for them. Um, and, and so yes, I feel really lucky that former Senior Deputy Mayor Mike Fong is now the Region 10 Administrator for, uh, the SBA, because he both has an in-depth knowledge of the city, its capacity and its limitations, as well as a deep love for Seattle. And so he's been a great partner as I've started out here. Actually, I think he was one of the first people to, uh, call me after the appointment was, was announced, um, looking, already coming up with ideas for how we could work together. Um, so we've got some stuff that we're cooking up that we'll be excited to announce soon. But an, an early example was, um, when SBA announced their, uh, Business Person of the Year for the Pacific Northwest. Uh, we were there standing with the mayor and, uh, Administrator Fong, celebrating Efrem and Boon Buna coffee. Um, just as a, a kind of showy example, but we've got some more meaty stuff coming in the future.
So just one of the issues, and I don't think it's a secret, um, about the potential taxing of the cannabis, cannabis industry and access to capital and Councilmember Herbl knows this as well as I do, I'm sure Councilmember, um, Nelson knows as well. You know, we can't do a lot until we have the fake, the federal banking laws changed to allow people who want to open. And that's why we've seen the inequities. People that have money can get capital and can have angel investors and can open up stores. And we've seen, we, we all see the inequity there. It's, it's, it's right there. I don't know if taxing is the right response, quite frankly. Um, I don't know what kind of training that means. Um, if we had it where, um, people could go to a bank to get capital, to get a loan, to start a small business for a cannabis store, um, then I could see where there would be training and you would connect with a small business association-like model. And you would teach people like, okay, here's your business plan, here's a class you have to take, here's how you get a loan, here's how you write your business plan, et cetera. I don't know if we're there yet. But what, what do you see for OED doing that for other businesses that can go to a bank or a venture capital group? Or how are you going to open up those systems and do more? And I don't mean just like, oh, we're going to open up the community for education. I mean, really, what is OED going to do to open up that so people can have access to, to a bank, to do a loan, to start a business? Because that's really what a lot of folks need. They need that kind of education and they need that kind of access and opportunity. If indeed, we're going to close this, this gap, this wealth.
Uh, I mean, I couldn't agree with you more. So we think, we see businesses needing three things, right? They need, uh, the training, uh, to run a successful business. But there's a lot of programs that just kind of stop there, right? All they're giving is some sort of education, but really what they then need is access to capital and then access to, to markets. Um, so if you can pair those three things together, that's usually a fairly successful recipe. And so that's the work on those latter two, the access to capital, the access to markets, is why we're kind of reshaping OED to have a focus on those. Because that's, that's where we see business growth really, really needing that kind of attention. But I'll give you an example of a program that we launched with some of the federal dollars directly related to access to capital. So the state has a flex fund where they were offering loans, um, at a fairly low interest rate through our community development financial institution, CDFIs, to small businesses in need. Uh, the city, uh, using those Clifford dollars, developed a capital access program where we could actually pay down twenty-five percent of their loan principal. So it essentially made the access to capital more affordable for those small businesses that really needed it. So we're going to have to do creative, um, creative things like that, because the city's not necessarily looking to become a lender or get in the lending game, but there are ways that we can either, uh, make it more affordable or kind of, again, open doors or break down barriers to that capital so that those businesses get access to it. It's, it's going to require, uh, again, this is why we need to get out of reactive mode and into proactive mode is because currently if we're only responding to crises, we will never come up with those creative solutions for how we connect businesses to, uh, to capital to grow. That's why we've got to do our reorganization. I mean, you've essentially kind of sold why we're, we're doing what we're doing in a nutshell.
So my last comment, if I'm, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, is that, um, we're still in the process of, and we'll be doing it soon, um, rolling out more than a land acknowledgement. And we've been working with tribes and as you know, the Makasoot Nation, um, is a big property holder in downtown Seattle. And, um, they just bought a twenty-seven million dollar, um, housing in District Four. And I'm trying to get them to all come north, by the way. Um, so I'm trying to make D five the home for, and working with the Simon, OVG, NHL and all the folks up here. It's, and we've developed well over 5,000 jobs. We're very proud of the work that we've done here. So, um, I want to, I want to make sure that OED is working with Tim Rainan, who the mayor hired as a tribal liaison, because Tim Rainan, I hope Tim's listening, is a phenomenal hire for the executive, being a lawyer and a formal tribal council member on the Puyallup tribe. And understands economic development like the back of his hand, like me. And so it's wonderful, um, having these high-level discussions with him about how, um, indigenous and tribes invest in their city. This is their city, the city of Seattle, hence more than the land acknowledgement. So I'm hoping that we can work with, and we are working with Tim, but to work with you as well, um, in how we, how we structure and kind of redo what we did in Indian country, in the city of Seattle, not only for individuals, but also to bring in tribes to invest everywhere. Um, I think people need to understand that tribes do more than casinos and hotels. Um, we actually own a lot of stuff and a lot of property. As you know, the Puyallup tribe just inked a deal with Kenmore Air and Amazon, um, and has been successful as well as Makasoot and Saqami and Suamish. I mean, that's the, that's the, that's the attraction in my discussions with tribal leaders is they want some kind of inroad besides the executive, like Office of Economic Development, that there's a place for them. And I don't think that there's anyone at OED that is doing that kind of work. And I don't think we can put it all on the shoulders of Mr. Rainan or quite frankly, myself. So I'm hoping, Markum, that we, you and I have a chance to have coffee offline and talk about how we integrate more than the land acknowledgement and the economic development and vitality that tribes have to offer, including leveraging their sovereignty, um, in, in their own land, but also obviously to land in OED. I'm really looking forward to that.
I'm looking forward to it as well. I'm excited about the opportunity you're presenting and that, that's exactly the type of stuff we want to get, get working on. So that's set that up and I look forward to talking to Tim about that more.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just going to say something that's probably obvious to everybody, but I'm just going to say it anyway. You know, business is about relationships and it's about welcoming communities and neighborhoods. And while I respect my colleagues and the issues that they want in their districts, I think the bottom line is you need economic engines so people have jobs. And if they have jobs, then you have transportation and you have libraries and you have good schools and you have sidewalks and you get the good stuff. And we've been working really hard and I want to point out Councilwoman Herbl, because she's the longest-serving, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Swant as well, is, um, is working to close those economic wealth gaps and making sure that, um, we have housing and all that stuff for everybody. And that's, I think, hopefully, one of the legacies I can leave when I leave here. So, thank you.
Okay, I really appreciate those comments. Um, small businesses employ about seventy percent of the people that work in the private sector. And so that's jobs. Anyway, we're running out of time. I would have liked to have asked about downtown revitalization. Uh, we can talk about that offline. To me, it means, uh, improving Third Avenue, perhaps some business recruitment, you know, uh, but that's for another discussion. So thank you, thank you, thank you very much. We will see you on the 27th to talk about, uh, to talk about the film economy. And, um, I invite any of my colleagues to, uh, to set up appointments with Director Mark, uh, McIntyre and, um, and learn more about some of the things he's touched on. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilmember Nelson. Thank you to the committee.
Okay, moving on. Will the clerk please read item two into the record and the presenters could come to the table, please?
Agenda item number two, Resolution 32056. A resolution related to the City Light Department adopting a 2023 to 2028 strategic plan update for the City Light Department and endorsing the associated six-year rate path for briefing and discussion.
Okay, so this is our first discussion and we'll have our second discussion and possible vote at our next meeting on July 13th. Uh, just a little bit of background on this cribbed from Eric McConaughey's memo from Central Staff. It's linked on the agenda. The disruption of the pandemic in 2020 interrupted the expected update of City Light's strategic plan and rate path. And in recognition of the economic stresses due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the executive did not transmit and council did not take up rate-setting legislation during 2020. And in 2021, council approved rates for 2021 and 2022, and they were effective on April 1st, 2021. So differing from the regular practice, City Light proposed the, and the council adopted a five-year strategic plan for 2022 in 2020s through 2026, um, after council approved that, uh, that rate plan. So now in 2022, City Light has proposed a 2023 to 2028 strategic plan to council, thereby restarting the normal two-year cycle of strategic planning, rate path determination and rate change adoption. So we're getting back on schedule. Uh, the committee will take up the proposed rate changes in August. And, uh, now will the presenters please introduce yourselves?
Good morning. Yeah, I was going to start and my name is, uh, Deborah Smith. I'm remote. Thank you for allowing me to call in today. Um, I am just going to kick this off and turn it over to my very, uh, well-equipped team. And I just really want to, uh, think, thank you and appreciate the time today. And I'll let you know how excited we are to share this strategic plan update. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to, uh, how about Lee to introduce herself and then you can just buck to Kirsty and the rest of the team. Thank you.
I'm Leigh Bereka, the Manager of Strategic Planning and Performance for City Light.
Good morning, my name is Kirsty Granger. I'm City Light's Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning, I'm Jenny Lavesk, External Communications Manager, Seattle City Light.
I'm Scott Haskins. I am the representative from the Seattle City Light Review Panel.
And is Eric present online?
Yeah, hello, hi, I'm Eric McConaughey on the Council Central Staff. Good morning.
Good morning and welcome, everyone. Please proceed.
Okay, next slide, please.
Thank you. Uh, so as we, as, uh, Councilmember Nelson just mentioned, we anticipate being back here on July 13th to respond to any questions that we may get between now and then, or to questions that you posed today that will need a little bit of time for us to, um, gather information and then hopefully go into full council action on the 19th to adopt this strategic plan update. Next, please. So this, uh, City Light strategic plan, just a quick overview. Um, this is our one, two, three, four, sixth strategic plan and/or update. The first was delivered in 2012 and covered the years 13 through 18. The process was established by council ordinance and it has a six-year rate path in addition to a set of priorities initiatives with the rate path to support that work. We developed the strategic plan in partnership with our City Light Review Panel. They provide input on the plan and the rate design. Nine members of the panel are representatives of our various customer groups and, uh, areas of expertise. Thank you. Foundation to all that we do at City Light and to the building, the development of the strategic planners, our mission, vision and values. I, um, these will be reflected in several of the programs that we will be discussing today. So as we said, the 2022-26 plan was called, re, I'm, I missed this, but was called a recovery, focus and restart. So this plan update puts us back on our two-year schedule, which coincides with our rate-setting process. Each strategic plan, we, we conduct outreach efforts to inform the development of each plan. In 2021 and 2022, we talked to several stakeholder groups, including groups such as the Seattle Renters Commission, the Northwest Energy Coalition, Seattle 2030 District, uh, Seattle Business Owners and Managers Association, the Multi-Service Center and Hope Link, to name a few. We also conducted a virtual town hall. Throughout the two years, we've talked with over a hundred and eighty attendees. This year alone, we conducted tell ten strategy planning meetings with our City Light Review Panel. In addition to meeting with customers, we examined the survey results that we'd received from a customer satisfaction survey and a clean energy future survey. Two highlights, I guess, that came out of that is that a vast majority of respondents were concerned about climate change. All demographics listed reducing climate change impacts, reducing reliance on fossil fuels and reducing environmental impacts as the three most important benefits of achieving a hundred, one hundred percent clean energy by 2045. In addition, with our customer satisfaction survey, an overwhelming majority, eighty-five percent of residential customers are satisfied with the overall service they receive from Seattle City Light. And reliability is one of the main areas that contributes to that satisfaction. There is a detailed analysis of all these findings in Appendix B of the, um, accompanying the strategic plan. And at the end of the session, if you have questions specific to our outreach, Jenny Lavesk is here to respond. Next, please. Beginning last year, we made a, um, a much more, um, we really tried to flex our muscle in combining our budget-setting process with our strategic planning process and working with our Raisin Social Justice Initiative Change Team at City Light. Each of the programs, initiatives and activities in the strategic plan need to be supported by the accompanying budget. And each of those programs needs to analyze the race and social justice impacts that it may have on our customers, uh, the constituents, the residents of the city of Seattle, any of our stakeholders. So this year, we held a number of what we called Equity Labs. These were conducted by the Race and Social Justice Team, where project managers brought their project proposals to the change team and discussed the equity outcomes of of their proposals, identifying marginalized stakeholder and to consider planning for the true cost of equity in interventions and to including those in the subsequent budget that followed. We delivered um the two thousand twenty-two strategic plan um to the mayor's office last May and met with you in June and July of two thousand twenty-one. So since that time, we were not only working on an update to that strategic plan, but we've also been delivering um some service, some important services to our customers and to the community. And I just wanted to talk about a couple right here. One of the things we're very proud of is delivering power in extreme weather. From the windstorms and to the record snow in the winter and the fall and to groundbreaking triple-digit temperatures in the summer. City Light responded quickly and safely to get power back on and to manage the power loads to ensure the system could accommodate the increased use. Creating shelter for unhoused neighbors. Working with other Seattle, city of Seattle partners, City Light has turned our former power control center on Roy Street in Seattle's uptown neighborhood into a twenty-four-hour shelter for forty unhoused individuals. In September twenty twenty-one, the Smart Electric Power Alliance, or CIPA, which is a nonprofit that envisions a carbon-free energy system, announced that City Light had earned a spot on its twenty twenty-one utility transformation leaderboard. Seattle City Light and the Washington State Housing Finance Commission's Sustainable Energy Trust were selected as the twenty twenty-one Green Power Leadership Award winners by the Center for Resource Solutions. And finally, City Light continues installing and operating publicly accessible electric vehicle fast chargers throughout its service territory. And we've also partnered with King County Metro and the city of Tuck Willa to develop and open a charging facility for Metro's new fleet of all-electric buses. Next, please. Going into the specifics about the plan. You'll see here are high-level business strategies. These remain the same as were in the last plan and the plan that we delivered um just last year, the twenty twenty-two plan. But since the adoption of that plan in July, we've been developing the programs or what we call the PIA's, the projects, initiatives and activities that we will undertake to help us achieve the objectives of each of our business strategies. And the deep, the programs detailed in this strategic plan update are all about looking ahead. We know the future is uncertain and success is dependent on approaching challenges and opportunities with curiosity, kindness and a commitment to equity. At economic recovery is happening all around us, and as we just heard from the previous presenter. And as a community-owned utility, our job is to help our customers thrive in the future we're creating together. So now we'll talk about each of the um business strategies very quickly.
And hold on, uh, General Manager Smith, did you have a question? I think I saw your hand. Okay, sorry.
Okay, our first business strategy, improve the customer experience. We're focused on engaging with our customers.
She is now talking.
I I was just saying, it looks like Councilmember Juarez has her hand up.
Uh, no, that's an old hand.
Okay, great. Well, that might have been the Deborah you saw. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, with uh the customer experience, we're focused on engaging with our customers and helping our employees see the impact of our actions from the customer's perspective. And we are also making investments to enhance accessibility and offer new program choices to better meet our customers' diverse needs. Okay. Thank you. So this is create our energy future. Our energy future is based on carbon-free renewable resources. A new or improved infrastructure is needed to ensure that electricity can be accessed whenever and wherever people need it. So much of this strategy is to implement programs and projects to enhance and up upgrade our system to allow us to support the increased electrification from buildings and transportation while also uh looking at federal funding availability to help us uh fund some of these efforts. Next, please. Thank you. Develop workforce and organizational agility. This strategy how is that our our industry is transforming quickly. And so are our customers' needs and expectations. So we have to invest in our people, processes and technologies to enable them to thrive in this transformational environment. We're cultivating a workforce with the skills and knowledge to align with evolving business pro processes and business needs and to advance social justice. Financialist stability is essential to everything we do. Responsible financial planning makes it possible for us to deliver the innovative energy solutions, plan for critical investments, and to keep our rates affordable. Uh, what you'll see here, there are three, each of these slides highlights three important areas and programs that we're developing for each. And you'll hear more about this one in the financial part of the presentation. Next, please. And finally, but not at all finally, we power. This refers to our core mission of providing our customers with affordable, reliable and energy environmentally responsible energy services. In order to do so, we we need to make uh infrastructure investments. We uh will be providing transparency in our operations through enhanced metrics reporting. And another key program that falls under this umbrella is the the relicensing of our Skagit Hydro Project. Now we'll move on to Kirsty Granger.
Thank you. Um, so an output of the strategic plan is a six-year rate trajectory that um outlines the the rates that City Light would need to support the projects, initiatives and activities that we just described. Um, you, this can be found in Appendix A of our strategic plan. One, a part of City Light's commitment to affordability is that we are aiming to deliver a rate path that looks like inflation. Um, and so you can see that for the strategic plan for the next six years, uh, it calls for a four-point-five percent average rate increase for twenty twenty-three and again for twenty twenty-four, and then three percent for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight. And the four-point-five percent for that the next two years is higher than what City Light had projected um in our strategic plan last year, and and this is due to the the high inflation that that we are seeing. Um, and I'm sure for for anyone who's tracking, um, this is probably not a surprise that, you know, inflation is impacting us all right now. Uh, for City Light in particular, the costs of uh raw materials, copper, um, poles are are significant for us right now and are rising quickly, even in the double-digit percentages for for some of these items. Um, so that the higher rate increases uh for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four reflect the inflation that City Light's been seeing um for the past several years. Uh, you can see there in the chart on the right, which compares City Light's rate path with the Consumer Price Index um as published by uh the city's own Office of Economic and Revenue Forecasts that we compare favorably to the trajectory of inflation. Um, inflation is high right now, but um we're we're going to try to stay under that. And and you can see that for um, for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we didn't have a rate increase in twenty twenty-one and then three-point-nine percent in twenty twenty-two. So some of the rate increases that we're proposing for the next two years represent a little bit of catching up for the impacts of inflation. Next slide, please. So just to provide a little context for what these percentages mean, uh, for a typical residential customer and an average uh resident. Um, their bill would be about eighty dollars a month and a four-point-five percent rate increase would would be about four dollars. Um, I just want to quickly acknowledge that there's a typo on the slide that somehow got past um all of our review that you can see that the rate path that we provided in the bottom half of this table for context, um, the the four numbers, the three-point-five should be three-point-oh. So sorry about that. And um, please make a note of that. So uh, for a residential customer, um, the rate increases that we're talking about translate to three to four dollars a month. And and then for customers who are enrolled in the uh UDP or Utility Discount Program, they receive a sixty percent discount on their bills. And so um, these rate increases would be a dollar fifty, two-dollar range. Um, for small businesses, medium businesses, we also provide some some context there for for what those rate increases would look like for them. Um, so um, next stuff, uh, in being a a municipal electric utility and we serve the community, acknowledge that, you know, any increase to utility electric bills impacts affordability for our residents um and for businesses in our community and and that these impacts are felt desperately um for for different members of our community. And so just wanted to take one slide to highlight um some affordability programs that that we offer here. Um, so we mentioned the Utility Discount Program, and that's an ongoing sixty percent discount. We also have several programs for income-eligible customers um to help uh customers who are behind on their bills. Um, and and we know that this is, this is an issue right now for approximately forty thousand of our customers. And um, thank you, Councilmember, at the beginning for your PSA, reminding folks that um we will be, we are actively out doing outreach to customers who are behind on their bills. Um, but we we are not demanding payment uh that that really what we're doing is um offering assistance. We have the emergency bill assistance program that provides um a credit of up to a thousand dollars for households, as well as federal programs that can offer um credits to help with heating expenses as a what, as well as the a new Washington State program that can provide funding as well. So we have a lot of help for customers who are behind on their bills, and we really do want um to to work with folks who are behind and help them get caught up. Um, and and then even for all customers who who may not qualify based on income, we have bill payment programs and and we're looking to help customers put together a payment plan that can extend from from sixty days up to to two, even three years to help them uh get caught up on their bills. And uh, both City Light and SPU, uh, we have our our late fees are waived until uh June of next year. And and so um, we we really do want to help customers um uh get up to date with their bills, and we have a lot of programs uh to to support them. Oh, and and if if anybody who's listening in, um, Google, Seattle dot co of utility bill help, and that'll, we have a nice webpage that'll tell, tell folks about these programs. All right, finally, I've got uh just one slide that's a bit of a sneak peek on on what happens next. So City Light strategic plan is is the foundation for our our budget and our rates proposal, and and so is uh City Light will be, uh, the whole city will be moving into budget um in September. And so we are um aiming to have approval for the strategic plan. And then we'll be bringing forward a rate ordinance that will set rates for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four that align with the strategic plan. Um, and uh the the increases for for customer classes and for individual uh customers will vary from that four-point-five percent average because um, we're going to be taking into account cost of service and some rate design changes. So there there will be a big ordinance coming in. Um, I think we're aiming to bring this to committee on August tenth. Um, and we also have some uh exciting stuff coming up with with rate design, um, a a time-of-day rate option that that we've been working on for some time. Um, so we're excited to bring that back to committee in August. So that's all of my slides. Is this where we turn it over to Scott?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, thanks, Scott. Um, oh, I was to introduce, this is Scott with the, again, with the City Light Review Panel. Um, our strategic plan is really a a a team effort between City Light staff and our our great review panel, which is uh nine community members who work hand-in-hand with us on uh putting this plan together. And so thanks, Scott, for being here today and and talking with us.
Thank you. Um, good morning, uh, Committee Chair Nelson and uh committee members. Um, I'm Scott Haskins. I'm sitting in for the chair of the panel, Michael Hanson, who is not able to be here today. But we all participate heavily in in this process, uh, as I think that uh City Council staff and Budget Office would attest. Um, and and so it's a privilege to be here. Just one quick note about the panel is that it's for the nine-member panel. Five members are nominated by the mayor's office, four uh by the city council. I was one of those city council nominees uh a couple of years ago. Um, and each represents a different customer group. My particular role is uh looking out for a financial analyst or financial status, and uh so I I bring some expertise in that regard. Uh, I'd like to turn to the strategic plan itself uh with some brief uh comments. And I have five quick takeaways uh that I'd like to mention. Uh, and these come from the the panel's letter to Mayor Harrell uh regarding the uh the plan itself and and the the update.
And that is attached to the agenda. Excuse me.
Pardon?
For the public, that is attached to the agenda.
Yes. Um, first, I'm pleased to confirm uh to you that the panel has unanimously unanimously endorses uh the strategic plan update uh as well as the associated uh rate path. Secondly, um, we, if in our due diligence and our involvement uh with the utility, uh, we believe that the utility has charted um a a course that keeps rate increases uh as modest as possible while maintaining basic services, uh, basic core services uh for customers uh as well as making necessary investments uh of capital uh to the infrastructure and the and the and the system. Uh, we think that the commitment to keep rates low is uh and and the the practices we've observed in that regard are impressive and very important to the re-review panel. Um, we recognize, as you do, the third point, um, is that these are very turbulent times. Uh, we've heard today about inflation, we've heard about, and we're dealing it in with City, Seattle City Light, with supply chain issues, we're dealing with with uh uh the economy uh and and we're we're finding that uh these costs are very difficult to project uh with certainty, that there are risks and that managing in that uncertainty in turbulent times is is uh going to be an important uh feature uh that the the utility uh tackles going forward. We've also observed, though, in our analysis, um, that the utility is aggressively working on uh workforce issues. They have a high vacancy rate, but they're working on on recruitment and uh and employee development and organizational change management. Uh, they're quite focused. We've heard several presentations on Race and Social Justice Program, both as with regard to the internal as well as the external uh community uh that that they serve. Um, uh, we and we we think that uh our role also going forward is to monitor some key performance indicators um uh in terms of how how they're doing uh relative to long-term health uh and and projects uh hiring, service. and projects, hiring, service delivery, overall costs and revenues. The fourth quick takeaway is that the advisory panel is deeply interested in financial policies, practices, and performance. These have been a focus of our panel for several years. And there are a couple of action items that are in their plan that you can look forward to seeing. One of those relates to long-term debt strategy for the utility. We're very interested in that because debt service remains a large component of the rates. And having electricity rates that are affordable are very important, given the, you know, the debt position of the utility. And so having a clear debt strategy is important for the future. A second action item that you can expect is to hear more from the utility later this summer on rate design. Back in 2019, the review panel at the council's request submitted a report regarding the desirability of updating City Light's rate design. This was right before my tenure on the panel. But we understand that the utility will be coming forward with the design proposal later for you this summer, and we're going to be monitoring that closely. The last takeaway and point that I'd be remiss if I didn't mention was just how impressed we are with the utility's current management and leadership. Deborah Smith, as well as her very capable and deep staff, has a great amount of energy, competence, leadership, and they're very committed to change and improvement. They want to make things better and that's evident to us in all the discussions we've had. Further, I would just add that we don't just go review things and give an opinion. We participate actively in discussions with them. We raise issues, we raise questions, we have comments. And without exception, all of those are taken seriously and addressed. So we feel very much a partner in the development of the plan as well as understanding the important role we have in reviewing the plan. So with that, that concludes my remarks for today and be happy to speak with you about any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you, Scott. It's good to know that the expert watchdogs are happy. So, and I second your comments about the leadership of Seattle City Light. So, and also thank you, City Light panelists, for your detailed overview of the strategic plan. Again, those documents are linked on the agenda. I see that Councilmember Herbold has a question and then I have a couple as well. Councilmember Herbold.
I do not. I'm sorry. I don't have my hand raised. I don't quite see what you're saying. Thank you. I might, but not right out of the gate.
For some reason, my cursor made a little hand thing. So anyway, I do have a question. On page three of the PDF that's on the agenda, one of the drivers of increased revenue requirements is an increase in annual transportation electrification incentives and to around $5 million on top of the current $2 million. And I'm just wondering if that will, and you touched on electrification, I mean, on electric vehicle charging stations. So I'm assuming that, is it correct to assume that a large part of that increase will be going to your electric charging stations?
If the answer has a number in it, I'm going to ask Kirsty to respond.
I can speak to it as well and say yes, Councilmember. So as you know, our Transportation Electrification Strategic Investment Plan is now in implementation mode. And I think we've shared, at least with some council members, that, I think we shared with all of you that we are piloting right now our residential street charging program. We're also rolling out a multifamily program. And I think what you'll see is that with appropriate funding, the money that we have for 2022, but going forward, the increased funding for this activity, our goal is to really be out there providing incentives and encouraging folks to adopt electrification. We're also really looking, I want to make clear, we have some very preliminary plans, but this is an area where we are laser-focused on the equity amplifications. We certainly understand that it is often our most economically affluent customers who can afford electric vehicles. And so we are looking at a host of other opportunities, including electric bikes and other things, so that we can provide benefits and access to all of our customers. So more to come on that. And I think what you will see is we will continue to share out with you as we launch new programs and expect to see those this year and next. Kirsty, did you want to add something to that?
No, I just, it's a great question. Thank you. And that you're right to observe that those incentives, that $5 million is money that we're looking to get out into the community. So it's, you know, we are building charging stations, but we're also looking to work to build charging infrastructure all over the community. So that is dollars that we will be getting out into the community.
Thank you. This is a topic that I'm very much interested in because our Seattle Climate Action Plan does say that it has a goal that 15% of passenger cars in Seattle should be running on clean electricity by 2030. And that's about 60,000 vehicles. And I think there are about 15,000 vehicles right now that are electric on our roads. So we've got a ways to go and one way to get there is to expand our EV charging network. So thank you very much for your work on that. And we also have to recognize that the utility and the ratepayers can't afford to do all this work and make sure that these charging stations are accessible everywhere on our own as a city. So we're going to have to also incentivize private vendors as well. And I'm working on some legislation for that. So stay tuned on that.
Well, Councilmember, that, just if I could, you've just touched on something really important. That is our strategy. Our strategy in general is to lean into the private sector. And we have made changes in the way we approach. We have a desk that deals full-time with the requests and asks from that network of charging entities because we feel like having them come in. And then what we intend to do is to continue to use public funds to fill in the blanks. So, you know, where are their locations and areas in our service territory where, for whatever reason, the private sector is not as interested? That's where public charging becomes critically important and we will continue to fill that need. And we will also be continuing to look at whether the notion of, you know, charging stations, for instance, at community centers, is that feasible at those locations where there is room, et cetera? So we are fully aligned with your goals there and I think we're all on the same page.
Great. Councilmember Herbold, do you have a real hand up?
Certainly do. Thank you so much. Questions about restarting collections on page 11 of the strategic plan. It says that Seattle City Light will be restarting collections practices as pandemic measures sunset. And the central staff memo says that restarting collection practices means shutting off power for unpaid bills after attempting to get customers with unpaid bills to avail themselves of assistance and payment plans. Slide 18 of your presentation includes information about a variety of bill payment support programs. And I'm just wondering, can you explain if some of these programs are going to be sunsetting and when? And how you're going to prioritize accounts for collections? And what measures you will be taking up not only to avoid collections, but as we all agree to avoid shut-offs of electricity for unpaid bills?
Sure. Let me take a stab and then Kirsty, you fill in the blank. I think in general, so first of all, what's really important to know is that we are not interested in shutting customers off. What we are interested in is having conversations with customers. So we're really going, we will feel successful if, in fact, we don't shut anyone off. Because what we want is we've got a plan in place that offers very, very generous, custom-tailored payment solutions to customers. All we need them to do is contact us. So I think, you know, you all can really help us in that sense as constituents come to you, et cetera. You know, we're going to work with them. We have, I think, staff has done an amazing job. I take no credit whatsoever, but we wound up at both Seattle Public Utilities and at Seattle City Light with really top-notch folks who've developed a plan that is really one Seattle-based. So we have a shared page for information. We are working with customers collaboratively. They already come into the same contact center. So we have aligned our programs as best we can. We're going to be doing all kinds of things, applying money on the backend as we receive funds from the state, continuing to provide emergency assistance funds. And I think we have legislated that so that we can continue at the higher level through at least this year. Right now, we have prioritized based on dollars. So right now, we are only actively working and communicating with customers who owe us over $1,000. That's the plan for all of 2022. I expect that as time goes on, we will move closer to our old threshold, which was $300. But we have no timeline associated with that. What we've done at this point is simply to say, this is where we're starting. We're going to learn from our experience, learn from the outreach. And we don't have, we have thoughtful, we think about sunset dates. But again, we are at the very, very beginning of this process and we're really most interested in seeing what's successful and then making tweaks to our program offerings as we need to in order to encourage customers to call us and make arrangements. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it is very customer-focused. And we are, I think it's always good to notice and make sure you all know that we did a lot of work with UDP customers on the backend last year, this year and last year. We applied the monies that you graciously gave us, allocated to us out of the Corona Relief Funds. We applied those on the backend to those customers who needed the most help, which means they didn't have to take any action. We also applied additional emergency assistance funds at both the SPU and City Light bills. And so we will continue to prioritize our lowest-income customers and ensure that they are not jeopardized while we work on these larger balances to bring them down. The other thing that's always worth noting is we do have a responsibility as a public utility who serves all customers to make efforts to collect past due receivables. And so we are doing that and we feel good about that. But please know that we have financially reserved most of that large amount, which means there isn't enough, it was in last year's financial statements, which means that as we recover funds, assuming that we do, and I know we will, as we recover funds, those actually benefit us, but we've actually already reserved the funds. So we're not at risk of a big write-down for past due or uncollectible receivables. That's already been taken care of.
Yeah, I guess a follow-up. I'm just, again, returning, not on the spot, Eric, but returning to the central staff's memo. It says, again, that restarting collection practices means shutting off power for unpaid bills after attempting to get customers with unpaid bills to avail themselves of assistance and payment plans. So I'm just trying to get a little bit more clarity on how and when the current practices, which are, you know, obviously they're COVID emergency-related practices, where you have agreed to not shut off people's utilities, how we can expect those to change and evolve?
So as you know, the moratorium on shut-offs and the Mayor's Office allowed that executive order to end in April. So right now, we are simply communicating with people. The soonest we would be shutting any customers off is April or later. Our hope was that we could work, we could incent as many customers as possible to contact us before we go into what is a normal winter weather moratorium, which generally would happen November, December, as soon as we start to see temperatures drop. Of course, we don't disconnect customers. So we wind up with a fairly big gap. So the idea here, and I know that you want a more definitive answer than maybe I'm able to give you, Councilmember, and I apologize. And one thing we could do is we could provide a briefing to you with SPU because our plans are very well-aligned. And I know you continue to track on SPU. So that would be something that we could do. But I, so what Eric has provided in the memo is a definition. So it's a definition. What does credit disconnects mean? And that is where they ultimately go. But again, in this instance, we think we will be able to proactively, most customers will be incented and they will reach out to us and they will make long-term plans. Depending on the amount that they owe us, some of the customers will be offered up to three years to repay these past due bills. So we're really trying to lean in and create something that works for them where they feel empowered and in control and able to pay those bills off over time. And so in terms of when that ends, there is no date identified. We're just going to be tracking how well we do and then making decisions, which of course we'll come back and talk to you about if and when we choose to move that number down. And that's really the best I can give you because we are in uncharted territory. And again, if we're successful and our current our current plan results in a lot of activity, a lot of customer calls, then that's what we'll stick with. Because again, that's the goal. I think that you know, and folks generally know, that we have not, at City Light, we have not disconnected customers for non-payment since 2016. So for us, it is a really heavy lift to get back to that. We not only need to work with customers who accrued large overdue bills because of COVID or the economic impacts of COVID, but we also need to work with customers to retrain them and to reincent them to work with us because we hadn't been doing that and we are very mindful of that. We're, I mean, I think as Scott mentioned, Scott Haskins, you know, our business strategies, improving the customer experience is one of our top business strategies. So we really want to do this in a way that feels respectful to customers. That's why we're working with a lot of community organizations, trying to work with people who can talk. We've got, all of our materials are available in many, many languages. So we're really trying to meet community where they're at to solve this, move this issue forward.
I really appreciate that and I appreciate the offer for a briefing on yours and SPU's work in this area. But I just want to, I mean, you're saying on one hand that there have been no shut-offs since 2016. And on the other hand, there may be shut-offs. So I want to understand what the policy is going to be.
Well, the policy is that customers who are not responsive to us, so as we have started to roll out, and this is something that's quite detailed. And in addition to a briefing, we can offer you some written materials that show it more clearly. The timeline, and I think SPU and City Light are on the same timeline. So we'll take that as an assignment and make sure you get that. But again, as I said, it's August where there could be customers who have not reached out to us at all, who have been non-responsive to our attempts to communicate with them, who at this point have a past due balance of over $1,000. Those are the folks that could wind up receiving shut-off notices late this summer.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the offer and I'll be taking up on it. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Eric, do you have anything to add to that or anything else in the strategic plan?
No, the only thing that might not have been mentioned is that, as I understand it right now, City Light with the other utilities, including SPU and the state, are waiting to hear from the Department of Commerce about the amount of the awards. There was $100 million set up in the arrears fund, a significant amount of money. My best guess is that our utilities will receive a large share of that. That will help a lot toward helping customers that are experiencing difficulties with their bills as a result of COVID. So there'll be an opportunity to be briefed about, like, what did the utilities get? How's it being delivered? And I think this committee or perhaps customer members individually can look for disbriefings on that. Deborah, I hope I got that mostly right.
No, that's absolutely right. And thank you for bringing that up. Because what's true is the Corona Relief Funds that the city offered us, that the city authorized last year, had to be applied and could only be applied to City of Seattle customers just due to the nature of the funding flow. What we appreciate and why this, what Eric just mentioned is critically important, two reasons. One is we believe we will receive a fairly significant amount of funding because in this instance, those funds are restricted and they need to be used for, there is a requirement that the past due balances be accrued after a set date. And many of our sister and brother utilities across the state began resuming collection activities prior to that date. So that means they won't be eligible for funds. And so we have learned that and we think more funding will go to us. The other thing that's critically important about this is that it will allow us to do the kinds of things on the backend for customers, especially low-income customers, who, which is who qualifies for these fundings, who are in our suburban franchise cities. who, which is who qualifies for these fundings, who are in our suburban franchise cities. So we weren't able to offer any help to those customers and we will be able to use the state funding um, to bring those folks as current as possible as well. And we believe that the combination of those two things will at least allow us to have most of our lowest income customers in a good place. Um, and then of course UDP is prospective going forward. So if we're able to clean up past due balances with their, they're continuing to benefit from the discount. We at least believe we can keep those customers out of a collection cycle. So the staff members who are working on this, Leslie Brinson from SPU and Catherine Eisenberg from Seattle City Light are tracking that very closely.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're behind schedule. If there aren't any more questions, I'd like to move on. Let's see. So will the clerk please read, uh, agenda item three into the record? And thank you very, very much, panelists and, and Deborah. Excellent. Again, we'll be take this up again on the thirteenth. And in the meantime, I encourage everyone to get questions to City Light.
Council member, really, if I could really quickly, just a note that came to me. Um, uh, the transportation electrification strategic investment plan. It's coming just with an update to committee on July twenty seventh. So if you have specific questions or areas that you want us to cover with respect to, to those incentives, et cetera. Um, if you'll, if you'll have your staffs, let us know. We can make sure that we cover that when we bring you the overall update.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Agenda, agenda, excuse me, agenda item number three. CB one, two, zero, three, four, nine. An ordinance relating to the C, City Light Department advancing certain objections of the treaty between the United States of America and Canada relating to the Skagit River and Ross Lake and the Seven Mile Reservoir on the Ponderay River, authorizing the City Light Department to accept grant funds from the State of Washington Department of Commerce and execute the related agreement for and on behalf of the City of Seattle. Authorizing the City Light Department to excuse, to execute an agreement with the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission to convey the grant funds received from the State of Washington Department of Commerce and certain City Light funds in contribution towards the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission's payment for the mining company's surrender of mineral and related rights and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts for briefing, discussion and possible vote.
Thank you very much. This item needs no introduction from me besides the teaser I gave at the beginning of the, of the, of the meeting. So I will, um, let you take it away after you introduce yourselves. And because we are running late, I want to confirm that my colleagues can stay uh, through the end of this item because, uh, we're down to three. Is that okay? Seeing no objection.
So I won't take any time then either council member, and I'll just turn this over to staff. But this is super exciting and we are really appreciative of your willingness to stay because this is something that the City of Seattle can feel, can and should uh, feel very good about our ability to help influence a long-term outcome for our state. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the team.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmember Mike Keynes. I'm the Assistant General Manager with Seattle City Light.
Maura Bruegger, Director of Government and Legislative Affairs for Seattle City Light.
Kate Engel, I'm the Science Policy Manager at Seattle City Light and also serve as the U.S. Secretary to the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission.
Go ahead.
So good morning. Um, I'm very happy to present this, uh, piece of legislation to you all this morning. It's a very exciting time for City Light and for the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission and for the province of British Columbia right now. As it sinks in with the U.S. and the country of Canada, uh, there'll be large celebration on those, at those levels of government as well. So a little bit of background on what we're talking about today. Uh, I'll be talking about the High Ross Treaty and Agreement that provides the foundation for the decision to be made today. Also be talking about the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission, which came out of that treaty and the infamous Donut Hole, which some of you may have read about. I'll explain what that is. Then I'll pass the presentation on to Maura Bruegger, go over the history of threats and actions to protect the Donut Hole as well as the current status of those actions and the purpose of this ordinance. Thanks, please. So a little bit on the High Ross Treaty, uh, as most of you are probably aware, there's three dams on the Skagit River. Uh, the last dam that was constructed and the northernmost dam is the Ross Dam. It's a kind of uniquely constructed dam that was designed to be, uh, heightened at, uh, several different stages, uh, to get to what they call the High Ross stage. That is, uh, the point of controversy here. Uh, the dam was started to be constructed about nineteen thirty seven. And it made it through the first couple of stages to stage three in about, uh, nineteen fifty or so. And then in nineteen seventy, uh, Seattle City Light pursued, uh, increasing the height of the dam, the last stage, phase four. And that's where everything started to, uh, to blow up. So what that meant if City, City Light had increased the dam's height at that time would be that the reservoir, Ross Lake, Ross Reservoir above the dam would have been extended up into Canada about three miles flooding the Skagit River and surrounding lands. And that was not, uh, that was a problem particularly brought forth by the uh, conservation organizations on the B.C. side of the Skagit watershed, uh, due to the environmental damage that would be, occur because of that flooding. So this controversy ended up being settled in nineteen eighty four with agreement between the City of Seattle and the B.C. Province. And then supported by a treaty between the U.S. and Canada to make sure that that agreement is fulfilled. So this agreement is an eighty year agreement and some couple of highlights of it is that on the B.C. side, um, first City Light would not be heightening the dam and that the B.C. government would be providing electricity to offset the electricity generation that wasn't realized by heightening the dam. And at the same time, to address the environmental concerns that were brought out by this, they established the Skagit Environmental Endowment Fund with seed money from, hang on. With seed money from, uh, City of Seattle and the B.C. Province. And that money is being, uh, used to support the environmental integrity of the watershed and it's being overseen by and administered by what was established as a Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission. Next slide, please. So briefly on the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission, it's a commission of sixteen, uh, commissioners, eight of which, uh, eight of, yeah, eight who are appointed by, uh, the premier of, uh, British, British Columbia and eight by the mayor of Seattle. And each government needs to provide administrative support to the commission, uh, in the form of two secretaries. I am, as I mentioned earlier, I'm on the U.S. side, uh, providing the administrative support to the commission. I have a partner on the B.C. side, supporting the B.C. side as well. And we work together to provide everything that the commission needs. These commissioners are appointed on four-year terms that are staggered. So there's a constant cycling of new commissioners in and out. And the administration is kind of the mortar between the bricks and the liaison between the various governments to make things happen. So the commission is supposed to use the funds from the, uh, endowment fund to conserve and protect wilderness and wildlife habitat. As you can see on the screen there, enhance recreational opportunities. And I won't go through them all, but I'll point out the third one, which is the subject of today's decision, which is their uh, directive to acquire mineral or timber rights consistent with conservation recreation purposes. Next slide, please. This brings me to the Donut Hole. So as you can see on the map here, I've got a, we've got a picture of the Skagit watershed in darker color on the left hand side there with a square red box kind of blown up on the right to show the exact location of the Donut Hole. The Donut Hole is the red area on the B.C. side there. It's, uh, situated between, between two provincial parks. Uh, Manning Park on the right side and Skagit Valley Park on the left side. Uh, the Donut Hole is a fourteen thousand acre area that has mineral tenures associated with it, most recently, owned by Imperial Metals. And it could not be incorporated into the Skagit Valley, uh, Provincial Park as intended because of those outstanding mineral tenures. So it became the charge of SEEK, uh, from its inception to acquire those and retire those mineral tenures. So, so that area could be incorporated into the park for the protection of the very sensitive upper headwaters of the Skagit River watershed. Throughout the rest of the watershed down to Ross Dam, it's got the protection of, uh, this Ross Lake Recreation Area as well as the uh, North Cascades National Park complex. So it kind of complete the circle. Uh, next slide, please. So as so eloquently put by Tom Uniac in his comments at the beginning of this, uh, session today. The Upper Skagit Watershed, the entire Skagit Watershed is of local, regional, national significance on both sides of the border. Um, that's what was the cause of all the public outcry when uh, all these different activities have been proposed because of the potential impacts to it and what it provides. So the watershed provides thirty percent of the fresh water flowing into Puget Sound. It has the largest and healthiest populations of threatened endangered steelhead and Chinook salmon in the region and this, and the United States. Uh, Chinook salmon provide eighty percent of the diet are southern, southern resident killer whales, which are also of regional, national importance. And it also has the most large, large and diverse population of bolt trout. Uh, ninety percent of which spawn above Ross Dam. And it's critical for grizzly bears and spotted owls and so forth. So the threat of mining within those, uh, the mining tenures of the Donut Hole presented a significant threat to the river as those, the toxins from mining would cause significant damage, particularly to the aquatic resources in the area. With that, I'll pass it on to Maura to talk about what we did to address it.
Thank you, Kate. Um, I'm not going to go into all the details because it was quite, uh, it's been quite a, a exciting past few years, but um, as Kate had mentioned, the SEEK had always been intending to, um, secure the mineral tenures and to close up the Donut Hole in Manning and Skagit Provincial Parks. Um, the urgency though really took off in nine, in two thousand and fourteen with the Mount Polly, uh, mine disaster when a um, tailings dam failed and eight million cubic, um, feet of mining waste um, was released into adjacent, um, lakes, uh, causing horrific environmental, uh, damage. So that really was a catalyst for the SEEK to, um, to, to start to take action, um, to reach out to uh, the mayor of Seattle's office as well as to start to engage directly with the B.C. Premier's office uh, on their interest in securing a, a deal with Imperial Metals to, um, surrender those, uh, mineral rights, knowing it was going to cost money uh, and trying to figure out how to get a price, uh, out of Imperial Metals. Uh, then in two thousand and eighteen, things got heated up even further because the B.C. issued a logging permit. SEEK was not notified, the city was not notified. Um, it also established logging roads. And so again, there was concern that this was going to make it that much easier for Imperial Metals to begin, uh, mining in that, in the Donut Hole. Um, the treaty was, was instrumental, uh, in our communications between the mayor's office and the B.C. Premier's office. Um, Premier Horgan, who came into office in twenty seventeen, uh, took a real interest in wanting to address, uh, the concerns and to find a way forward uh, to protect that area and close up the Donut Hole. Um, also as Tom Uniac, who was on earlier with public comment, he led, uh, the creation of a coalition that was very successful. Strong collaboration with, uh, U.S. Tribes and First Nations, uh, as well as, uh, environmental organizations. Uh, we had engagement from our congressional delegation, state legislature, and of course, the Seattle City Council members were quite active as well, uh, in communicating. Um, in twenty nineteen, um, Imperial Metals did submit an exploratory permit. We weren't surprised because the logging roads were going to make it easier for them to do that. Um, and so then again, uh, we really ratcheted up our engagement in responding to, um, to the permit, uh, application. We also had engagement from EPA Region Ten. We had engagement from, uh, the National Park Service, um, um, and so, uh, as well as the state agencies and again, all of the coalition members uh, commenting on why that mining permit should not be issued. COVID shut things down for a while and things were slowed. Uh, there was really no action on the mining permit. We kept checking, but nothing had happened. We continued to discuss this with the B.C. Premier Horgan's office, trying to find a way to have a deal and Governor Inslee, uh, got engaged as well in reaching out, uh, to Premier Horgan. Um, ultimately, they were able to come to an agreement, um, and, and engage Imperial Metals. Um, and, um, in twenty twenty two, um, the SEEK and B.C. um, signed an agreement with Imperial Metals for them to surrender their mineral tenures in the Donut Hole for, uh, nineteen point one million U.S. That involved, um, both, uh, Canadian contributions as well as U.S. contributions. And that's why we're here today. There's just a couple of articles. We got very good press coverage, again, helping to put pressure on the B.C. government and on Imperial Metals to, um, to find a solution. Next slide. So, uh, what we're here to do today, uh, first, SEEK, uh, and City Light signed an agreement, um, back in late twenty twenty one because this deal was, uh, being discussed. Um, and we agreed, um, to one point two five million from City Light. The state agreed to four point five million. Um, and they would, uh, they would contribute that via City Light through a, through a state grant. The legislature took action on that state grant in March of twenty twenty two in the supplemental, um, budget. Uh, we have a draft grant agreement right now that we're prepared to sign when we have permission. Um, we also, um, sought and received, um, a letter from B.C. Minister Hayman. He's the Environment and Climate Minister for British Columbia uh, to Mayor Harrell, making clear that their intentions are to be able to close up the Donut Hole um, and permanently protect it, uh, after the, with, with the surrender of the mineral rights, which has happened. Um, and so this ordinance, um, before you today, thank you for staying, is to execute the grant agreement. Uh, so it authorizes us to sign the grant agreement with the state, um, accept the state's payment and convey that payment to the SEEK. And then to execute agreement between the SEEK and City Light, um, that, that, that addresses the, um, the expectations from the funding as well. That's it. Thank you so much. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much. This is an amazingly happy ending to years of hard work and, and collaboration. So I thank you very, very much for seeing this to the end. This is, uh, this is an amazing win for the environment. So thank you. And fun fact, Tom Uniac, Director of Washington Wild, who spoke earlier, um, is the one who spearheaded outreach to the brewing community because, you know, no clean water, no beer. So, um, he reached out to many, many, many brewery owners and I was one of many who signed a letter of support for this. So it's interesting to see it come full circle. All right. Uh, are there any questions from my colleagues, any comments from Eric?
I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well then, um, I am thrilled to move that the committee recommends passage of Council Bill one, two, zero, three, four, nine. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Will the, uh, it's been moved and seconded to recommend passage of the bill. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the rule on the committee recommendation that the bill pass?
Councilmember Salwon?
She has left.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Chair Nelson?
Aye.
Three in favor, not opposed?
Excellent. The motion carries and the committee recommendation that the bill pass will be forwarded to the City Council on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty two for final consideration. All right. This concludes the June twenty second meeting of the Economic Development, Technology and City Light Committee. The time is eleven thirty nine. I really appreciate everybody sticking in here. Our next committee is scheduled for July thirteenth at nine thirty A.M. And if there is no further business, this meeting will now adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.